When it's in Hafa Day, the Community Environment Revenue Taxation Labor Procurement Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this confirmation and public hearing to order. The date today is May 14th, 2024. The time is now 9:09 a.m. In compliance with open government law, notices of today's hearing were published or broadcasted on KUEM provided via email to senators stakeholders in the local media and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice website on May 7th, 2024 and May 12th for the 48-hour notice thus meeting open government law. I'd like to acknowledge my colleague Senator Tai De Gui, whose birthday is today. Happy birthday, Senator. The purpose of today's confirmation and public hearing is to discuss the following agenda items. To hear testimony, the executive reappointment of Elizabeth T. Fisher to serve as a member of the Alcoholics Beverage and Control Board. And the second item scheduled is to hear testimony on Bill 55-37COR sponsored by Senator Sabina Flores-Berez and Senator Chris Barnett. It's an act to amend, Section 2811(c) of Chapter 28, Title 11 Guam Code annotated, relative to improving the collection of automatic appropriation of use tax by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency's Guam Environmental Trust Fund. The rules of conduct are as follows. Those called to testify will be in order, beginning with the government agencies, followed by those that confirm in advance, and then by according to the sign-in sheet to ensure that all public comments are captured. I ask that all written testimonies be submitted to my staff, who can make copies and disseminate. Those providing oral testimony will first be recognized by the chair before speaking. Please state your name, organization, position if relevant for record-keeping purposes. Senators will be given an opportunity to ask questions at the end of the panel. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. And now to begin our agenda, to hear testimony on the executive reappointment of Elizabeth T. Fisher to serve as a member of the Alcoholics Beverage and Control Board and to serve a two-year term from the date of confirmation. An overview of the board. The board consists of five members who are appointed by the governor with the advice and consent of the legislature. The board has the power to license the importation, manufacturing, sale of alcoholic beverages, the ability to suspend, revoke, or reinstate such licenses. Every member of the board and the compliance inspector has the power to enforce these laws on alcoholic beverages. Additionally, the Alcoholics Beverage Control Board has the power to promulgate rules and regulations consistent with 11 GCA Chapter 3. So I believe that Department of Revenue and Taxation will be sending their written testimony. So at this time, I'd like to recognize the nominee for her testimony. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning, Senator Perez. Good morning, Senator Tai De Gui. Thank you for the opportunity to seek your continued support for my reappointment to the Alcoholics Beverage Control Board. My experience in regulatory compliance, along with my time as deputy director of administration and board member since 2019, has provided me with the qualifications to effectively serve. In the past year alone, the board has tackled a substantial workload managing 105 license applications and overseeing 514 inspections. Backed by the solid expertise of the Department of Revenue and Taxation's Compliance Branch, we've addressed 21 violations resulting in fines exceeding $33,002 license suspensions. I remain deeply committed to serving on the board for two reasons. Firstly, I am passionate about promoting responsible alcohol practices in our community. Secondly, I believe in fostering a fair and balanced regulatory environment that allows for the responsible sale and enjoyment of alcoholic beverages. I'm a strong advocate for collaboration and will continue to work closely with all stakeholders to ensure the board's continued success. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much, Lisa, for your testimony and for continuing to accept this nomination. I know it's one of the busiest boards in the government in regarding, and I think a lot of businesses really rely on this board to ensure that their licenses are continually renewed. So I guess the couple of questions that I have is, can you summarize your most significant contribution to the ABC Board over your past years as a member of the board?
Yes, so I think we've been very active in implementing or enforcing the regulations. We've been very supportive, you know, with the compliance team and what it is that they try to accomplish. It's been kind of rough because there's only three people on the board, so we can't afford to miss any of the meetings. But we've seen a lot of fines and a lot of inspections coming up, and I think, you know, post-COVID, now people can do a lot more in-person processing. And so we continue to, you know, ask the compliance team to go out there and enforce the law and by doing their inspections and regulatory compliance processes.
Okay, thank you. And I know when we first confirmed you, one of your big projects was to ensure that you were enforcing the law, in particular to youth. What have you contributed to that particular initiative?
Well, so we do have a lot of discussion in our meetings about what the regulators or what the inspectors see out there, particularly, you know, sales to minors. And so that is sort of a red flag. We take time to really discuss, you know, how to stay on top of that and how to correct these, you know, people who are violating the law in that regard.
So has there been a plan in place to, or strategies that are, I mean, maybe you don't want to divulge it here, but is there a concrete plan in place to increase enforcement? I know capacity is one of the issues, and this is something that has come up in the oversight hearings with DRT, is we need to boost the personnel in a lot of these other branches in DRT, including compliance. Like you said, there's only three individuals, and I know there's even, I don't know, the access to resources too is limited. So has, I mean, this is something we're coming up upon the budget, right? And, you know, what is your take on, you know, is it, I mean, I feel that it is critical. A lot of the resource, access to resources and personnel is critical. And how can we really move forward, I mean, considering that there are, you know, youth, you know, we know that youth are being, have access to these, you know, illegally have access to these products. And, you know, what do you think is the common cause for that? And, you know, have you studied that and seen how we could boost enforcement in those areas?
So one of the things that we've been very passionate about as a board is these temporary business licenses where you have these concerts or these outdoor activities. So we've been really strict on the process in terms of putting the onus on the applicants. So, you know, there's times when they'll put out, say, two or three bartenders or servers for the event, and we know that the event is going to be well over 500 people. So we've really put our foot down in terms of, you need more servers, licensed servers. And then we've instituted more of an identity, you know, like a wristband. So we kind of mandate that now, whereas before it wasn't mandated, but we do mandate that. We mandate looking at the maps and seeing, you know, how the perimeters are going to be set, if there's a beer garden or like a alcoholic beverage, you know, drinking area, how that's going to be cordoned and controlled. So those are the kind of the things that we've really instituted in the last two years post-COVID, now that things are ramping up and all these events are happening.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you for joining. Can you discuss a time when you had to deal with a significant compliance issue and how did you ensure the board's regulations were enforced?
So I guess I could talk about the two license suspensions. The owners, I feel, might have found, you know, ways to try and reduce the penalty or maybe even not undertake the penalty. And so I've been pretty vocal and firm in that the law is pretty easy to follow, and if you cannot follow it, then these are the consequences. I think it's pretty simple to enforce the law, especially when they have reasons that are not viable.
Yeah, that speaks to your background as a compliance officer, I believe, in the bank.
Yes.
So yeah, that definitely has a transfer, the skills have transferred over. How do you ensure that your professional and personal conduct remains above reproach in your role as a board member?
Well, I guess I would say I practice what I preach, and, you know, when I'm out in public, I have to set the example. And I have two young children, one just turned 18, and so, you know, for me, it's just an everyday living experience and making sure that they're not only in compliance with the alcoholic beverage control rules, but other rules in life. So I just try and live, set the example, and practice what I preach.
Okay. And then as far as conflict of interest, do you foresee any conflict of interest serving on the board as well as being a deputy administrator for Department of Administration?
No, so when I was, when I took on the position as the deputy for Department of Administration last year, one of the first things I did was try to understand if there was a conflict of interest between my serving on the board and the work that I do. I did find something in Article 5 of the GCA, and pretty much the eligibility list, I don't, nothing there applies to me. I just don't get the $50 stipend anymore. I did reach back to the Compliance Branch Supervisor to make sure that what I'm interpreting is correct. I also reached back to our HR Administrator at the Department of Administration, and nobody confirmed that it would be a conflict of interest. So I've just forfeited the $50 a month.
Okay. And as far as the, your functions, do you foresee, I mean, I know you did check with legal, which is good, but do you foresee any potential conflicts of interest?
So when we explored that idea at Department of Administration, the only thing that came up was if I have to sign checks for the vendors, right, like the alcoholic wholesalers or retailers. But there's not been any conflict about it so far.
And do you sign those checks or do you hand it over to somebody else to sign?
I don't really sign a whole bunch of checks, but if I come across that, I will pass it on to the director.
Okay. The other thing was, you know, the big change that happened was the opening of the Don Donkey, right? And were you on the board when you made those decisions to approve the license?
Yes.
Okay. And I know we did pass the budget bill that allowed for that. There were some qualifications. Can you kind of explain the decision process, if you can recall, in that board meeting?
Yes, so that had been in progress for a while, and by the time it had come to the board, they had met the requirements for the exemption. So we approved the exemption first, which included a certain amount of money invested in Guam, a certain amount of employees, an impact assessment, and we had reviewed all the documents prior to that meeting. So we approved the waiver exemption, and then we approved two new licenses for one of the restaurants and the lounge, the Island Lounge.
So the other thing is, what is your take on, I guess, you know, again, you know, we're talking about protecting youth access from alcohol. I believe there is a area in the store where they serve samples. Is that correct?
That would be, I believe, on the basement.
Yeah, is there a carding that occurs to go down there at that, to ensure, you know, that they're meeting that right age and, or where does carding exist at that spot?
I don't believe carding exists to go down to the basement. I think anyone can go down there. I'm not sure if it's just alcohol they're selling there. I know that that's where they base their alcohol sales. But, I mean, it would just be similar to how Payless sells their alcohol. You do have the managers that are licensed that know the rules, and then you have the servers that are licensed, if at any time they're serving alcohol, that know the rules. And so we hold them accountable.
Okay. And then in law, there currently doesn't exist where you can sell on and off sell. So how was that approved? Because, you know, these stores sell, you know, you could take it, you could sell it as well as drink it on-site. So how is this approved? Under what authority was this approved?
At the basement?
Yeah.
No, I don't think they're allowed to drink on-site.
Okay, I thought there was a sampling area.
So if it's a sampling, it's a different license, and that's only a temporary license.
Okay, and so for the Don Donkey, is that a temporary license?
It would have been a temporary license, yes.
Okay, so that's the authorization. Okay, all right. And then recently in the news, there was an article about a whistleblower who said that there is a vendor out there that was selling below, I guess, the, there was a question whether they're being taxed properly. Does that fall under the ABC Board and, you know, what type of investigations? Is this something that the board is looking into?
I'm not familiar with that, but I could definitely cover that at the next board meeting, which is tomorrow.
Okay. All right. And, okay, as far as stakeholder engagement, in what ways do you engage with various stakeholders, including the public, industry representatives, and other government agencies?
So usually, if there's any engagement, it would come to us through the Compliance Branch, and so we can opine or give our support. We would talk about it in the meetings, or else stakeholders will attend the meetings, and then we address, you know, whatever their concerns or issues are at the time.
Okay. And how do you ensure that your decisions are objective or based on, you know, the best information, or to what extent, you know, are these decisions made with that in mind?
So we rely on the compliance team's expertise a lot, and so when they provide guidance, they usually provide the statute that goes along with that guidance or their interpretation. And if there's any, ever a time when we need to question, you know, our role or what we're going to vote on, they will reach back to legal. And so we'll table it until that is all settled, but we don't rush to make any decisions at all. And we do vote collectively as a board, and we do read the material before the meeting so that we're well-versed, and whatever questions we have, we just lay them out there in the meetings.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Lisa, for answering those questions, and I'm going to open up to my colleagues as well. Senator Tai De Gui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Senator Chairman. I thought I was tough. All the questions were asked.
No, I really greatly appreciate, you know, the oversight chair of this committee. She does her homework, you know, and I can always rely on that, you know, learning even more with some of the questions that she has that I never even thought of, so definitely does her due diligence. Thank you so much, First, for stepping up again and wanting to serve. Greatly appreciate it, especially, I know, the kind of job that you have in the daytime that requires a lot of your work, and so I greatly appreciate it, you know, and taking time. I like the comment you made about your son, you know, he's 18, and why you want to serve, and I think that's commendable, I mean, because, you know, we want to teach our children by example.
Yes.
And that gives me comfort to know that means that you're going to be making right decisions, you're going to be fair, you're not going to be a yes person to anybody, you're going to do what's right for the people of Guam, and that's showing an example to our children, that's, you know, you have integrity, and I greatly appreciate that. So thank you for that comment that you made. It was very touching.
You're welcome.
I do have a couple of questions, though, with regards to the fines. I noticed that in your testimony, you said that you were able to collect at least $33,000 in penalties and fines, which is really good, because in 2023, they only collected about $15,000 in penalties and fines. So my question is, what do you think is attributed to this, you know, this bump in penalties and fines, which, you know, it could be attributed to many things, but what do you think it's attributed to? From 2023 to $15,000, now this year it's $33,000.
Yes, so I believe they upped their manpower, so I think they hired a few more employees at the Compliance Branch. And then post-COVID, you know, now they're more able to go out and do in-person inspections versus before when they couldn't really go out at the time.
So you attributed to that many of that, well, it sounds like because you have that extra manpower.
Yes.
Is available. Okay, that does make sense. I appreciate that. The other one is, you know, I've been a real fan on transparency. It's important that the people of Guam know exactly what our boards are doing as well as our agencies, and posting it online is one avenue to research that, other than looking with, reading in the newspaper, and it's not always accurate, but can you tell me, how are your board meetings placed online for the public to review? What is the, if the people are listening right now, how can they look at what's going on at your board?
So in accordance with the open government law, we do, the compliance team does post the agenda prior to the meetings, and then we hold our meetings, they're recorded, and then usually within the week, the compliance team will send that recording to OPA. And you can actually access the meetings on DRT's website.
Okay, so on DRT's website.
I think it's DRT.
Okay. Sorry, I had to clear my throat. I don't know why I keep choking. Maybe it's because you're talking about your son, you know, and I'm waiting for that call today, by the way. Six eight, yeah, he's six foot eight.
Oh, wow.
My little boy. Hers is going to get just as tall, I know that, already at his age. He's almost as tall as me, and he's what, in third grade?
Oh, wow.
Third grade, I know. I dig. I guess Mother's Day is lingering into today, Tuesday. We're still feeling the Mother's Day thing and, you know, the importance.
The sentiments, yes.
But yeah, I guess I got a little choked up when we talked about her son. So I'm glad to hear that, that the listening audience can actually see what's going on with this board, Alcohol Beverage Board, by going on to DRT's website and looking at the board minutes, or listening, or it's recorded, right? So they can listen to the board minutes.
Yes.
Okay, and that's very important. So I hope, you know, Ms. Fisher, that you ensure that it's always posted, follow that, you know, the five-day open government law to a T, and you'll be fine, because everything I see so far, you're doing a great job, and I greatly appreciate, again, your time and energy and sacrifice that you made to the people of Guam by serving on this very taxing board, very taxing board. You meet quite a bit, so I greatly appreciate it again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Tai De Gui, and happy birthday again.
Yes, happy birthday.
I'd like to recognize Senator Kanata. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and certainly good morning to you, Mrs. Fisher.
Good morning.
I wanted to get some feedback. I know our chair definitely had a lot of questions that you were able to answer, which we appreciate, but I wanted to ask, in terms of the, and I see in your testimony, you put the amount of inspections that you've had, and certainly the amount of fines that have been issued by the board. Do you have a comfort level that we have enough routine inspections occurring of these establishments? Simply because I know, like, public health, for example, in doing the inspections for the restaurants, they're way behind. So in terms of the, you know, the amount of businesses that we have that certainly sell alcohol from, you know, it could be a store to obviously bars and restaurants, are you able to, or do you feel there's a comfort level in terms of adequate inspection to make sure that compliance is being properly addressed?
Yes, so I believe when I first started, there were very rarely done inspections, but with additional manpower, not only are they going out more frequently, but they do have a plan, because I do ask about that routinely, you know, what's your plan to go out again? And they go out like, you know, at odd hours of the evening, so they do have a plan and they are actively engaged in inspections.
How about with regards to underage sale of alcohol? Were any of these fines related to any sale of alcohol to anyone under the age of 21? Or do you feel some comfortable that the, you know, that these establishments are properly complying with the law with regards to sale of alcohol? And non-sale of alcohol to those that are, you know, under the age of 21?
So the age didn't come up in the violations. It's mostly operating after hours, and operating after hours, I think that was the big, that was the big one, operating after hours and sometimes a large capacity in the bar, but there were no underage drinking that came up in any of the violations.
There's a proposal in legislature to increase the number of hours that these establishments can stay open, particularly our bars, till almost when the sun comes up the following day. What are your thoughts on that?
I think I'm okay with 2:00 a.m. in the morning. The last suspension that we did, the bar owner did ask to consider, you know, opening the bars until a later time because she was operating after hours, but personally, I think 2:00, at least at this point in time, is satisfactory for me.
Well, I appreciate your response to that and certainly your service, because you certainly, as Senator Telo mentioned, you have a lot to juggle with your daytime job. And I also agree, I concur with your justification as to why you want to serve and the purpose for your service to this board. It's not one of the glamour boards, obviously, but it serves an important contribution to the community, certainly in addressing these issues of concern and an area definitely where regulatory requirements need to be kept in place. So thank you very much for your service and your desire to continue to serve on this board. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Kanata, if you have any questions or comments.
Hafiri, good morning, Ms. Fisher. I just wanted to thank you for your service in the military, I noticed in your career. Other than that, some certain information, there's nothing really major for me to question about you. I just wanted to thank you for your public service, and my office remains open to supporting whatever issues you guys see. Certainly, if there needs to be any revisions in any legislation, let us know. I appreciate my colleagues' concern regarding the legislation that I did proffer regarding extending operations, but there is going to be a public hearing to discuss further the legislation, and I look forward to hearing from the board as well and other businesses that certainly would like to have or may have interest in. that certainly would like to have or may have interest in extending operations. But again, the legislation is being proposed, and it will be having its day in court, so I just wanted to thank you for your public service. I know you're also the deputy director of DOA, and again, I know there's a lot of challenges and possible issues that you face on a day-to-day basis, and my office remains open to supporting, okay? Thank you so much again.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Kanata. Maybe just one more question. So I know the board doesn't make policies, but what do you see in regards to ready-to-drink alcohol? So there are these types of alcohol that have less alcohol content. Are they, do they cause any kind of issue with compliance?
Are you talking about like seltzers?
Yes, something like that.
So that is one of the discussions that we're having, because it's a different type of alcoholic beverage, and so these establishments that are selling seltzers, that's part of the conversation that we're having now to find out how we're going to regulate the sale of seltzers, which doesn't really fall under the definition of beer or wine. So that's come up, and it's on our radar for discussion.
Yeah, because, you know, the, some of it looks really, it blends in with the non-alcoholic drinks, and so, you know, if somebody's not really looking, they might be imbibing something, and it's not legal, like if they're underage especially. So, I mean, I think that poses a potential issue for compliance. So you guys are having that discussion?
Yes, yes, the compliance team did bring it up to the board, so we're actively discussing it.
Yeah, then I look forward to the outcome of that. I think, you know, ultimately, you know, compliance on Guam has been a challenge, and, you know, if there's anything that the board needs as far as resources, I think, you know, DRT, the director would have to really advocate for that.
Yes.
And, you know, I've always been a proponent to collaborate with the agency to ensure the resources are sufficient. I know it's been a challenge, but even to allocate within the agency has been a challenge as well. So definitely willing to work with you and DRT to ensure that our laws are properly enforced, especially changes that are happening in the landscape here today. So again, I want to thank you for your acceptance for the nomination, and we look forward to, you know, seeing you up in the next session.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
So at this time, if there are no further testimonies or comments or questions on the nomination of Elizabeth T. Fisher to serve as a member of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board, this nomination has been duly heard. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement Statistics Research and Planning. It can be dropped off the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or email to office@senatorparas.org. So thank you so much, and have a great day, Lisa. So on to our last item of the agenda, which is Bill 55-37COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, and Senator Chris Barnett, an actamend, Section 28112C of Chapter 28, Title 11, Guam Code annotated relative to improving the collection of automatic appropriation of used taxes by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency's Guam Environmental Trust Fund as the primary sponsor of this bill pursuant to our standing rules. I won a Rule 6, Part B of the 37 Guam Legislature Standing Rules. At this time, I would like to recess this public hearing for this bill until Monday, May 20th, at 3:00 PM. So at this time, the committee is now in recess. The time is 9:42 AM. Thank you. Sutuas Masi.